Welcome to this morning's Spokane City Council's study session. We've got two matters to talk about today. First is going to be impact fees in the I-90 or 195 corridor. Secondly, we're going to have one last touch on city council rules updates. We're missing council member Kinnear and Bingle. And council members Oppone will be a little bit late joining us, I believe is what's going on, but he should be here. But with that, we'll invite staff up to talk impact fees.
Good morning. Just going to hold this. Okay. So at our discussion last week, we talked about the next steps on the US 195 study. And I just want to touch back on that before I move on to the impact fees. These were the steps that I shared with you. And the question I have is whether you would like staff to move forward with preparing this resolution and bringing it to the council for adoption. This would be to endorse the findings of the US 195 I-90 study.
Yeah? Go ahead. We're not taking a vote, but go ahead and register your opinions.
I would say yes, that is really the, to me, that's the linchpin before we can do anything else. So I would be in favor of adopting the resolution of the 195 study.
Yeah.
Is the study somewhere I can read it?
Yeah, I can send it. I can send you a link.
Yeah, send it out again, I think.
Okay. So I could, assuming you want to move forward, I would need a sponsor. So council president, would you?
I'm happy to be a sponsor.
Okay.
We need another one.
I will also.
Okay.
Let me just ask again, Inga, has the 195 study been presented to the neighborhood council? Do they, have they seen it? I know we had discussed that, and that was something we felt they did not understand as those conversations keep going on down there on 195.
So I know that some of the neighborhood was present at the kickoff meeting because that one was in person. That was pre-COVID. And they had a really good turnout. It was at the church down there at Meadow Lane. So they were involved in the front end. I know they had opportunities for involvement during the process, which was online at that point. Maybe did not get as good of participation as it would have otherwise. But I know that SRTC staff did make offers to go and talk to the neighborhood councils. And I, so I don't know how many times they reached out, but what I heard is that they were not asked to go and, or that Latae-Hangman did not take them up on that.
Okay.
And I can't remember if they went and talked to Grandview. I want to say they maybe did one time.
So are we going to make sure that, do they get a copy, excuse me, a copy of the study, these neighborhoods?
It's all posted online. So anybody who was on the email list for it would have access to it and know where to find it.
Okay, that's great.
Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's actually a really important point. I've had several people reach out and I'm like, well, look, here's, here's all the things we're planning on doing. And they're like, oh, okay, well, that sounds, I mean, there's a little bit of a chicken and egg issue for them, understandably, of like, because they want it to be done first and then housing built. And it's, well, you need the impact fees in order to fund it. So I mean, there's a little bit of that. But I think if people understood what the bigger vision is, it would be helpful. I don't know if it would take care of all their concerns, but, so. So we can do, as council members, I think we can do some, I think it'd be great if you sent us the link and send us this draft, and then people can get back to you in the next few days if they want to do something, and we can spread the word out. And maybe if they didn't take SRTC up on it, maybe they would take some council members up on having it.
I was going to say absolutely, because there is a very dedicated group down in that area.
Yeah.
Who's been kind of leading the charge. So I just want to make sure that they have the opportunity, they've questioned us, but the opportunity, before we actually pass the resolution, I would just feel better about that. But I'm in support of the resolution going forward.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to the impact fees. So just to give you a brief history, we adopted our impact fee program in 2011. We did a fairly major update of the program, starting in 2017, that took two years to get finished, which involved working with an advisory committee. At that time, we also established the West Plains as a separate fee district because that was added to the city between 2011 and 2017. The focus of the program is to fund projects that pay for capacity improvements. And the reason we do it this way is to ensure that development can meet concurrency guidelines when they come in. And so we try to, we tried to kind of trade off the need for the development community to pay for expensive impact studies and have to pay through SEPA mitigation, to hoping to plan for things upfront where they can just walk in, we know where the problems are, and they can pay a fee and move on. The fees are paid at building permit, not at the time of plat. And we often use this money for a source of grant matching, which has allowed us to leverage it pretty well.
Inga, before?
Yes.
On the, in terms of projects, is this just transportation, or is this also sewer and water? Because I know in that valley, we have huge issues on that as well.
This is only transportation. Yeah.
And there are no impact fees for sewer and water that you know of?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Okay.
So up here, I have our impact fee rate calculation. So we come up with a base fee per district, and that has, we have three inputs into that equation. We have the total cost of all the, total cost of all the projects we want to do in that district. We have trip ends, which is basically future traffic trips that are going to be made in and out of that district, and I get that out of our regional travel demand model. And so that's for a 20-year time period. And then we multiply that times the percent that the developer is expected to pay. So right now, the development community pays about 50% of the projects.
Again, just in terms of discretion, you had the note that said you can't charge 100%, but what's the range? And then who decides that?
So that is decided by, by city council. It's, so we, it used to be 40. We increased it to 50 when we did the update that started in 2017. And we can go up just about to probably 99%. It just can't be 100. So this is the structure. And the current fees that we have up there on the left, we did, when we did our update, we put in a measure to do an annual inflation increase. And I want to say it's around 3% that we up at every year, which isn't really keeping up, unfortunately, with the last couple of years. But we are bumping it up every year. The rates haven't changed significantly from when they were adopted, with the exception of the West Plains, since that didn't exist at that time. But I think they're all within a couple hundred dollars of what they were when they So what I'm proposing would be the best way to move forward right now would be just to add in a separate district for the Latae Valley. In doing that, I need to adjust the boundaries of the West Plains and the South District. We have to shuffle a couple of projects around, and I have to make a boundary that makes sense from a traffic shed perspective where people naturally drive to. So I would propose that, that we move forward with an update of these three districts. And that would be modifying the boundaries, updating the project list, which could, which includes updating the cost estimates on that project list because they're, they're getting a little dated, and then updating the fees for those districts only. And the reason I'm suggesting doing it this way is just, it sounds like there is concern that we need to get a Latae fee adopted fairly quickly. The last time we did a whole overhaul of the whole thing, it took two years. And I'm concerned that if we went through and touched all the other districts, it might go the same way.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering, can we, do we have the ability under state law to exempt areas entirely from an impact fee?
No. The way it works, we did end up kind of cutting out the airport, and I'd have to go and look up exactly what, what the legal reasoning was for that. We can't exempt anybody unless the city pays the fee for them. And so when we did our last update, there was discussion about doing, I guess, an incentive for the PDAs where they would be exempt. And the way that that would have worked is that the city set aside a certain amount of money, and then we would have paid their fees for them when they came in for permit.
But really, we're just paying ourselves, right? Because we're the collector. None of that, none of that fee is passed on to other entities, right?
Right.
So could, I mean, I guess, in my mind, it would make a lot of sense outside of the West Plains and Latae and future annexations to just exempt basically all of our single-family zones, because it really just doesn't make sense in our already built-out areas. If you're building to the already allowed density, you're really having a de minimis impact on, on transportation. So in my mind, it makes a lot of sense that we would exempt single-family zones from, from this. And then the other thing I would, I really think we should consider at a minimum is not collecting these fees until the CO is issued, rather than upfront, just as a way to, to allow people a little bit of flexibility, especially if they're just doing a one-off little project.
I don't think we can legally exempt single-family.
Really?
Yeah. I'm pretty sure that legal would tell me no.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And we do, I think, have some flexibility in collecting the fees. I'd have to check with Developer Services, but there is, there is some kind of provision in state law that allows people to do like a delayed payment of impact fees. I don't think anyone's ever used it here. Usually they just, you know, when they come in for building permit, they just, they pay all the fees then, and that's, that's when they do it.
In our, in our 2016 infill steering committee, one of the recommendations that came out of that was to collect all fees, permit, impact, everything, at the point of the CO. And I don't think that's ever been pursued, but it would make a lot of sense, I think.
Yeah. I think part of the issue with collecting it at CO is just that there's, there's pressure once they get to the CO stage to get their facility open. You know, if it's a business, they're like, okay, give me my sign off.
All the more motivation for them to write that check.
Yeah. That's just the discussion I've heard on it. So this is the, the draft boundary that I came up with. And just a little note on history that I learned. Apparently, when this was first proposed back in 2011, they did draw the boundaries like this. They had a separate district for Latae Valley and decided not to go forward with it because the fees ended up being so high. They decided, the city council at that time, decided to go ahead and roll it in with the South District and combine it. But the way I set this up, you can see that the line between the light purple and the orange, I've got a couple arrows pointing to the West Plain, or West Hills neighborhood and Grandview-Thorp. I thought those were probably best to be included in West Plains, mainly because their traffic feeds over to Sunset Highway and not as much down to US 195. The boundary there between West Plains and Latae Valley is the Trolley Trail, which kind of acts like a natural barrier between the neighborhood because there's no roads crossing it. So traffic on the north side tends to head north. Traffic on the south side of it tends to head down to Thorpe and down to 195. And then the, the line on the east side there is kind of following Latae Creek. So I kept the northern part of the Vinegar Flats area in with the South District because I think most of those trips tend to head towards downtown. And that's something that we could explore further through the process of, I don't think I've got that in the right spot. So just to touch back to what we discussed on last week, these were the near-term projects that were recommended out of the study. And then this was the list of the long-term projects. So what I did is I took from those and came up with a list that I thought we could accomplish within 20 years. So this includes all of the near-term projects and then a selection of the long-term projects. And I specifically focused on the ones that I thought would be required for development to be able to move forward, plus added in a couple of non-motorized projects, just so that we can make sure we start providing some of those elements to people in that area. The one addition on here that I have highlighted is the tunnels on Thorpe Road. Those were not part necessarily of the recommendations that came out of the US 195 study, but there has been some interest in developing large parcels of property to the west of there that came in since then. And the tunnels are narrow, and if you watch, if you sit out there and watch how larger vehicles drive through it, they tend to treat them as a one-lane road. And at some point, there's going to be a capacity constraint there if you start running enough traffic through it. And so I've done a little bit of analysis on that. I have like a rough capacity for the tunnels. But basically, it's, there's not enough capacity with the way they are now to allow for full development of that vacant land west of them. And so that's why I've added in here a couple of projects. The first one would be the, the Long Tunnel, which is going under BNSF. We would either need to widen that tunnel or build a separate one for the non-motorized movements and take out the sidewalk that's in there now. The other one would be the tunnel, the shorter one, that goes under the Fish Like Trail, which that one is not as complicated because we're not going under an active rail line anymore. But it would probably just need to be replaced, either with a tunnel, rebuild the tunnel or just rip it out and put in a bridge.
Just a question on that. Is that Lyndicky frontage, is that going to take some pressure off those tunnels or not?
No, because they have to go through it.
Okay.
They have to go through the tunnels to get there.
All right.
Yeah. So these are the rates, very, very rough, but wanted to give you a range. I'll start with, with the South District. I incorporated a couple of cost updates into this one and would probably need to do a few more updates to them. But this is just based on the, the cost estimating we've done for the roundabout at Freya and Palouse, because we're putting in an application for that next week for federal money, and also for the Ray Freya Alternatives work that we did, and now moving that forward. So I've upped the, the cost in that category a little bit. West Plains would also get modified because we're shifting a couple of projects over that used to be in the South District. That would be the Plan Signal at Sunset and Assembly would, would end up in that category. And then we also put in a little bit of money for the, the Latae Bridge, the High Bridge that needs to be rebuilt, not putting the full cost in there because we still need to do some analysis of that. But I wanted to make sure it got, got mentioned, I guess, in the impact fee program. So those go up a little bit. But the big one, obviously, is the Latae Valley. In order to build all of the projects that were on that list, which is not the entire list out of the US 195 study, it's only a partial list, you're going to be up in the probably 7,000 to 9,000 range. And this is that the developer's paying 50%. And just for fun, because there's been some discussion about it, I put this together just to show you how that would change if you change the developer percentage and increased I also put together a table showing all of the active development projects in the area. The oranges, the stuff that would be in the proposed Latae Valley District. The purple would be the ones that land in West Plains if we adjusted the boundary. The projects where I have the Xs here basically show what improvements need to be built before they can move forward. And, and this is all conditions from WashDOT, because WashDOT has taken the stance that they, projects cannot move forward until we have funded projects to fix the, the problems in their corridor.
So, Inga, so none of these, though, would be paying the higher rate because they're already in motion, correct?
No, they would be. Because they, they get paid, so Ds are, some of these have already gone through the plating process. The ones with the asterisk next to them are in process. They do not pay until they come in for an actual building permit on a specific building.
And those, and, and so we're talking 7,000 per unit, right? In a multifamily.
That's where it would land to do that project list.
So 7,000 per unit. So do we know for sure that, that these would continue to pencil and they will continue to pursue these projects?
No, we don't.
Because this is 25, or this is about, what, 10% of our needed housing units right here? And we could be scaring those off by jacking these prices up quite a bit. And there's not a lot of other places to build.
Yes. That is the dilemma. I can tell you that Canyon Bluffs at the top is fully vested. They don't, they could move forward now and do their infill. They've been sitting on it for a while.
Inga, and again, how often or what would be the process if we started out at 50% and two years later, we realized they really should have been paying 70%? So if we go with this 50%, then you just factor in increase in costs, you know, CPI, or it would have to come back to council again for another significant increase?
I would have to come back to you to adjust it by that much.
Okay.
So is there, is there a way that, that, I guess we can put, is there a way we can avoid putting all of this on the latecomers? I mean, there's a lot of development that's already out there, and they're all going to get to avoid these fees and the impacts. And it just feels like we're simply targeting latecomers. There's got to be a way that everybody who's impacted can have some skin in the game.
Not through the impact phase, we can't. I don't, I don't know what other mechanism that would be.
Okay. Because I have a lot of heartburn over just simply putting this on the latecomers.
Well, everybody's a latecomer, kind of, except for Canyon Bluffs. They're the ones that can go forward at this point in time.
They, they can. They, they would still have to pay whatever the fee, the current rate is at that time.
Okay.
Yep.
But every, every development that's up that way is creating some impact on 195 and, and the need for Lyndicky and the need for, you know, Inland Empire Way. And it's not just the new developments coming in that's creating the, the need for that.
Right.
I think it's helpful to tell you that the impact fees, they have been paying to date since the 2011 start of impact fees. It's just not a big enough rate to pay for the high costs of the improvements that are needed. So everybody that has been approved since that 2011 has paid a version of a, of an impact fee. It's just we're trying to write it to the actual costs that it takes to actually address all those impacts that these new folks are certainly going to be, be bringing to bear. And yes, the folks that paid the lower cost that likely should have been paying a higher cost at the time.
What, have we talked to any of them at all about the proposal, just to get feedback?
No. No. This is the first touch on it. I had not discussed it with anybody yet, other, other than the fact that we were planning to look into adopting a separate fee for the Latae Valley, and that it would be higher than what we have now.
Okay.
None of these are affordable.
They were not.
It won't be after the price comes out.
Well, I don't, I don't know if any of them were missing middle housing as what we were.
It's all market, right? I mean.
All market.
As far as I know, yeah.
Is there any way we could do an incentive that?
I don't know. Can you, can you adjust impact fees for affordable housing?
We do, we did add that provision into the code during our last update.
Okay.
And I'd have to look up the exact wording of it, but they, they have to meet certain qualifications to get it.
Okay. And the other, the challenge for all these, I'm looking at all those Xs, which means unless we get the money to build these projects, this housing can't happen because WashDOT won't let it happen.
And the way it's, it's working right now, which is difficult for the developers, is that they're having to handle these projects on their own. So we've got a group of developers that are working together to build the improvement at 16th. And if, if we're not successful with our federal grant application, then we'll have the same thing with a group of developers fixing Meadow Lane and doing Inland Empire Way and possibly Hatch. I'm still kind of waiting for WashDOT to decide how they want to handle that. So they'll, you know, they'll find a way to move it forward, but it's, it's going to be slow for them.
And potentially, they're going to have to pay 100% of those costs as opposed to the 50%.
They will. Yeah, they will pay 100%.
Yeah.
So I guess that just feedback that I was looking for from council today is if you want staff to actually initiate this process and start working on it more in depth than I have today, I would have a number of project costs that I need to finalize just to do updates in the South and West Plains districts. I need to check and see if it needs to go through SEPA again. And I could probably be back in a few months with, with more of a proposal to consider.
I would support that.
I would thank you, Councilmember Stratt. And I was going to say the same thing. We're like at an impasse until we do something. And so to, to at least start this process, Inga, would, the neighborhoods have leaned in pretty hard. I think we were going to get there, but they made us get there faster. And so I would certainly support moving the process forward and seeing what the proposal looks like in two to four months coming back.
I, I have a lot of heartburn, but, but I understand the, the situation with 195. So I, as long as kind of the next steps would include some engagement with the folks that would be impacted to get some feedback and make sure they're aware of what's going on, I think that would be, I mean, we, we got to do something, so we'll have to look at it.
Yeah. And I did give their traffic engineer a heads up that we were going to be discussing it today, so I mentioned he'll be sharing that out to all of them.
Good.
Good.
I concur as well. I think we need to do it regardless of whether you're a developer or an existing resident. We need to move forward. And, you know, you've done great work so far. You've given us the scale and the scope of it.
Yes.
Which is, it's just a challenge. I mean, that's the whole challenge of development, of who's going to pay for the infrastructure, who's going to subsidize who. And so, there's not an easy way. But I really appreciate the way you're moving so that we can then address it and we can make those determinations on percentages. And if we can get an affordable housing piece that would give relief for any developer who is willing to do that, you know, that's just an option. So, continue on. You're doing great.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, the question at the bottom. Is there, do you want me to stick with the 50% for now? Do you want me to look at adjusting that?
Okay, I'm tight. But I realize with the cost of everything going up, I would have to say I'd be looking at 60, Inga, personally. But I'd be open to other council members. That's just the reality of cost, so.
I was thinking 70, so.
I think it's 70.
Every penny that goes up is another penny. People have to pay in rent or their mortgage. So, I would say I would go down. I would go down.
Yeah, I would say that, so we're not going to give you any clear guidance. But so, the real, the guidance is have the options because it's challenging. I, you know, in my mind, I was thinking higher percent. And then, when I see that it's about seven times the cost of the other zones, I'm like, ooh, that's, you know, per trip. So, I just think we're going to have to take a deep breath when it comes. So, having the options, I mean, I think it's just math at this. Once you figure out the project, it's just math, so.
It will be just math, and I was going to suggest the same thing. We'll go ahead and give you the same range. And just keep in mind that whatever number you pick, what's left is still the cities to figure out and fund.
Yeah, right.
And it's still a process of grant writing. It's still a very competitive process. And so, it's a time commitment, too, to figure out how to get all that through the system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Inga.
Thank you, Inga.
All right, well, we'll move on to more boring topic, perhaps. Maybe not, but council rules. So, we had a request to have another touch. Every time we have another touch, we make some further changes. We've tried, Brian McClatchy, Hannah Lee, and myself have tried to incorporate as much of the feedback as we felt we could. Sometimes the feedback was conflicting, but we have track change version for you. Hopefully, people who gave us comments, either verbally or written, will see many of their things in there, I hope. That was the intent, not all, but. So, but open it up. I know Councilwoman McCaffrey, I think you might have a.
Yeah, well, there was, I know there was a question from one of the, from one of the LA's regarding the ability for staff members to participate in open forum. And there was just a request for maybe clarification over the, what's intended by the, I guess it's Section 3. I don't have it open in front of me, but.
Whether or not they had to take vacation?
Yeah, the vacation day and how that would work, I guess, was the question that they were trying to understand.
Yeah, so I'll try to go. So, again, there were two schools of thought. One school of thought was no testimony from council staff. And the other was, okay, as long as they're not using city resources, either actual or perceived. And so, essentially, the intent of this as written is that they're off the clock. So, people, I don't know how much people keep track of their hours in that job, but they wouldn't sort of attend the meeting and then, okay, and I'm going to clock out for five minutes and do that. But they wouldn't have to take a vacation day to do it, in my mind. It's just that, you know, during the meeting, if they were going to attend the meeting to testify, you know, so 6 o'clock, you know, they're not considered working during that time. So, that's, they're just not. And, you know, in my druthers, they would say, you know, I haven't been working this whole meeting, but I do care about this issue.
No, I agree with that. And if it was, if it was my LA, I mean, I would strongly encourage her to just note somewhere that she was not working during that period of time, just in case there's a records request or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I think that makes, that makes sense to me.
Yeah.
You know, overall, I looked through this, and I'm still looking at some of the last-minute tweaks that I haven't totally digested. But it looks like a lot of the changes incorporated some of what I had recommended. And so, really appreciative of that. And I know Councilman Bingle had a couple of things, but he is not here to ask those. And I don't know what they were, so I won't ask them.
I tried to do the same with his comments and incorporate them as well, so.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I think it addressed a lot of my concerns. But if I see anything else that's popping up, I'll bring it up Monday.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question? And I've had computer issues, so I didn't print it. So, I don't have it in front of me. It's in my brain.
Yeah.
Where are we at with the, so we have, in order for something to get before council, out of committee, before council, two sponsors. Is that still?
Right, yeah.
Yes.
What happens if you are a lone council member that you want to get something out there before council? And you, you will sponsor it, but nobody else will. What happens then?
Well, you can bring it to committee. You can get a public at a committee. The, I think the pieces, the thinking is about requiring two is it's kind of a motion and a second. It's kind of like if you don't have at least two people to bring it to a whole council meeting, then it probably is going to get tabled or deferred or something like that. So, and there are people, I, in my time on the council, if somebody feels strongly, there are many times someone that will sponsor it just as a courtesy to get it, to do it.
I've seen that. But I've also, you know, in early days of council, sometimes when an issue is divisive and there's, you know, one council member still standing in support, I just feel like it's, it's trying to stop a process that if a council member wants to bring an item forward and is willing to sponsor it, I just don't know if we have to have the two sponsors. That's the only thing that's giving me.
No.
Heartburn over it.
It's a trade-off because it's, can one person make all the other council members sit through it? So, it's a trade-off, but I totally get the point. Councilwoman McCaffrey?
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree with Councilwoman Stratton on that. I think, you know, each of us being independently elected should have some ability to advance something on behalf of our constituents. But, you know, I understand kind of the concept of a motion and a second. So, I, you know, I really kind of understand why it's the way it is. But I think as independently elected officials, we should have that power to bring something forward, knowing full well that certainly it could be deferred or, you know, voted down with ease. So, but I think that's just the risk you take if you don't have more support when you bring it forward.
Yeah.
And I'll just say, I understand it, too. Personally, I have worked with council members to say I will second it because whatever it is needs to have a discussion to actually bring forward, whether I'm in support of what it is or not. But in order to get it before the council and before the community, I think that's something each of us will have to really look at when we don't want to play well with each other.
Yeah, I mean, and part of me just, you know, we see that in state government, and that makes sense. But this is municipal government. I just, I'm not sure that we should have to follow that, you know, directly. I just think that if there's a council member in good faith that has an issue, an item, an ordinance that they want to sponsor and nobody else wants to sign on to it, they have every right to bring it forward and have that discussion in public and have a public vote on it. I just, I think it's okay to do that on a state level. It's okay to do that on a federal level, but this is municipal government. This is, this is that level that we can get a lot of stuff done. And I just, I just think one sponsor should be enough if they can't get a second one. But that's, we can continue to talk about.
I'll second that amendment if you bring it forward.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I would, that sounds like a potential amendment. I, as, since I was kind of the quarterback on this, I support how it is, as you might imagine. And I would say, hey, you get the committee discussion. You don't need a second there. And basically, that's where you're getting your vote of can you get one more person to join it? That would be my thing. But whatever the council majority does on that, so that's a potential amendment, for sure. Oh, Zach. Excuse me, councilmember Zappone. Oh, we can't hear you very well.
Oh, Scotty can hear him.
Can you put him by us? Can you?
If Scotty can hear. It's got to be our, something with our audio that's screwing up.
We can't hear you yet, but we're working on something. Hang on. All right. We're going to try a workaround here. Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Barely. We, yeah.
Turn up the volume?
Yeah. Try again?
Well, that might work.
There we go.
All right, try.
Can you hear me now?
Barely, go ahead, Doug.
My point was just that I think it's a workflow issue. And if, you know, we have a lot of things that we're working on, and if you can't get a second sponsor, it kind of keeps us working on other projects that we can be working on. And so, I mean, we have more time to work on things than like the legislature. But I think it's just a matter of we can't entertain every motion that. And it's going to probably die later. Like, it's just, we got to work on the issues that we know have potential to.
Yeah. Okay, we heard that. Thank you. And, yeah, so that, I'll get to you, Councilwoman McCaffrey. So, yeah, we'll definitely consider that as an amendment when we are voting on it and see where people land on that. Councilwoman McCaffrey?
Yeah, the only other thing I just remembered was somebody had brought this up at our open forum on Monday, and I wanted to just raise it, was the idea of either two open forums, as we had at one time, or just one, but moving it to the front end of the meeting. And just for more accessibility. And just kind of curious, I'm open to different ideas on that, but I was just curious if there's any other thoughts from other council members on the open forum.
I would love to go back to one at the beginning and one at the end. I appreciate people coming down and making the effort to be here. And I would, I would support one in the beginning and one at the end.
Limited to a certain time, or how would you?
Well, the meeting officially has to close at 10:00, doesn't it?
9:30.
9:30. So, if we can make that happen, great.
Yeah, just we don't, if you have it on the front end, you don't know.
What's the back end?
The time, if it's a big night, divisive issues, so you don't. But, but that's, again, great point. Bring it up. I'm a fan of doing it at the end and not making that people who came down to testify in specific legislation wait. But it's just a trade-off. I mean, there's, there's not a right answer, but let's, I really appreciate people bringing.
And I remember doing it, and I remember very few times we had, and I could be wrong, but we had that rush at the end to be done by 9:30. There may have been a couple, but I just remember it flowed just as smooth with one before and one after. And people, those that liked to sit through a meeting didn't mind waiting. Those that wanted to come down and just, you know, get their points made.
Well, we did limit, we did limit the first one to a certain amount of speakers of the first one. That's, that is how we managed it before, is we said, okay, you've got this many people on the first, first five to sign up or something like that can go.
Yeah, and then they don't have to sit through the whole meeting if they don't want to.
Yeah.
And council can extend the time past 9:30 if we are in agreement on that. So, there is still the flexibility. If there is a significant number of citizens who want to speak in open forum, that's not a closed door, so.
Yes.
One, just one other is, and we put it in here because it's the way we've been doing it, which is the signups being for that hour preceding the meeting. But I'm wondering if, and I wouldn't necessarily change it now, I think it'd be premature, but if we could kind of look at how we could set up something where people could sign up online and then come down. So, they could do it maybe during the week and then come down. And I just think there's got to be a system like that, that, like in the legislature, people can sign up online and then they can go to the hearing and.
Yeah, well, we do have the online signup. It's just during that one hour. And the main reason is that is that we often don't have our agenda set. So, we don't know which things are going to be on or not on until after briefing.
That's fair.
And so, sometimes our briefing, we had one thing. I think we were down to like three minutes before the thing. So, that, that's the main driver on that. If we knew ahead of time what the agenda was, then that would totally be easier.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Zappone? Okay. All right. All right, great comments. When are we looking at, April 11? So, yeah, so go ahead and propose any amendments, and we'll see what the.
Oh, April 11, okay.
Weight of council wants to do or not on anything. All right, and with that, I'm wearing my ZAGS shirt.
Go ZAGS.
Go ZAGS. And take care of yourself, and if you can, somebody else. We're adjourned. We'll see, again, a reminder for our council watchers, we don't have a 6:00 PM legislative session next Monday. It's, we're going to do it at 3:30. So, there'll be a signup starting at 2:30, I imagine, there. So, we'll do that. All right, we're adjourned.